Wow, this group is really good. It's 2:00 in the sun. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, January 3rd Board of Supervisors Organizational and Regular Meeting. If we could all stand for a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And during this moment of silence, I would appreciate it if you keep the family of Roger Welsh in your heart and thoughts. He passed away on December 11th and had been a supervisor for 22 years. Thank you. Do we have to tell you the why?
Yes.
Okay. Just to let everyone know, Mr. Carney has joined us via Zoom. He is at home getting over-
Medical reasons.
Medical reasons.
Thank you for permitting me to join via Zoom. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for accommodating me.
Hope you feel better. All right. It is the time for election of officers for organizational meeting.
Yes, Chair, if you would like, I can run you through this process that you've used the last several years. And I can do that for the Chair, and then you can take over, whoever can take over, and then follow through myself, or the Chair can take over from there.
Sounds good.
All right. But explain this to the Board. Outside of the meeting, the way the Board chooses to handle this portion of the meeting is for me to open the floor for nominations. Any nominations can come forward, and then when it appears nominations, no further nominations are to come forward, then I will ask for a vote by the members saying the name of the person that they prefer for that position. So the first position you will consider is the Chairperson to serve until successor is elected at the organizational meeting to be held in January 2025. And so I'll open the floor to nominations for Chairperson.
Mr. Curry, I'll nominate Ms. Donahue as Chair with gratitude for her steady hand and even temperament over the years, and hope we can continue to benefit from her leadership as Chair.
Hearing none, nominations will be closed with only one. Ms. Donahue will be chaired by acclamation of your members.
Thank you, everyone.
So would you like-
Keep going.
Okay. Next on your list is Vice Chair to serve until successor is elected at the organizational meeting in January 2025. So I'll open the floor to nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Curry, I'd like to nominate Mr. Whitson to serve again as Vice Chairman if he'd be so willing. I'd like to thank him for his past year's service.
Nomination for Mr. Whitson. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none, we'll close nominations, and Mr. Whitson, you'll be Vice Chair by acclamation.
Thanks very much.
Next on your list is the representative, Board's Representative to the Rapid安 Regional Commission, who will also serve through January 2025. County Administrator also serves on the Rapid安 Regional Commission. So I'll open the floor for nominations for your Representative to the RRRRC.
It's sports tradition to appoint the Chair to this position, and so I would nominate Debbie Donahue to serve as the Board's Representative to the RRRRC.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations will be closed, and Ms. Donahue, you'll be the Representative to the Regional Commission. Next is the Board's Representative to the County Planning Commission. This, in the last few years, you have also elected an alternate to serve in the case when the primary is not available. So I'll accept nominations for the Appointee and the Alternate.
Mr. Curry, I'd like to nominate Ms. Smith, and I'd say that with personal gratitude for her stepping in, whenever it was, more than a year ago, and we appreciate all that you've been doing there. So, thank you.
I have a nomination for Ms. Smith as the Appointee.
I'd nominate Mr. Whitson as the alternative alternate if he is still willing.
Chair, who was the alternate this past year? It was me? Oh, okay.
Try not to miss meetings, especially this week. We'll continue.
Ms. Smith did so well. You didn't even know.
You did such a good job. Thank you. Any other nominations for the Appointee or the Alternate to the Planning Commission? All right. Hearing none, Ms. Smith will be the Appointee. Mr. Whitson will be the Alternate.
And it's well noted, and I will now remember.
Next is the Board Appointee from the Board of Zoning Appeals to the Rapid安 Planning Commission. I don't know if you received anything in writing from the BCA, but at their meeting they did, there was a vote to recommend Mr. Teekelman fill this spot.
I would just say, as the Board's Representative on the Planning Commission for the past year and a number of months before that, we find ourselves on the Planning Commission in a complicated review process of ordinances, and as much as I appreciate the recommendation of the Board of Zoning Appeals, I do believe it would be wise to keep Steph Ritter as the BCA Rep to the Planning Commission.
Is that a nomination?
Yes, sir.
Any other nominations?
Mr. Curry, is there an opportunity for a quick discussion, or is that appropriate there?
Yeah, absolutely.
I would like to echo Ms. Smith's comments, but I would like to further add that I reviewed the BCA's meeting where Mr. Teekelman nominated himself and made a public confession that he does not grasp the comprehensive plan. And I just want to be very clear, from my position, that the BCA is a, performs a much-needed utility and role in our county, and it is a vital part of how our government works. And so I think that that body requires people that fully comprehend not only how our county government works, but the documents that help guide us to get there. So I just wanted to state that for the record, and I support Ms. Smith's nomination for Ms. Ritter.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close nominations, and Ms. Ritter will be the Representative. Next you have your Representative to the Rapid安River Basin Commission. This also includes an Appointee and an Alternate.
Mr. Curry, I would, if she'd be willing to do it, I'd like to nominate Ms. Donahue to serve as our primary Representative to the Rapid安River Basin Commission. I think it's, it fits Ms. Donahue's skill set quite well, and she's quite active also in state government, meeting with representatives, et cetera, in our legislature, and there's overlap on the River Basin Commission. So I think it's really a perfect fit for her, including her own interests in state government.
Any other nominations for the Appointee to the Rapid安River Basin Commission, or the Alternate position?
I think Mr. Carney's been serving as our Representative. Is that correct?
I have been.
You have been?
Yeah, and then I believe Mr. Frazier was the Alternate, if I remember.
And Mr. Carney, I think, was the Alternate before.
Precisely. Is there anyone that would particularly want to be the Alternate?
If Mr. Carney would be willing, I think.
Mr. Carney, would you be willing to be the Alternate for the Rapid安River Basin Commission?
Sure.
Okay, then I would, not move, but nominate him to be our Alternate for that Commission.
Any other nominations for the Appointee or the Alternate for the Rapid安River Basin Commission? Hearing none, your Appointee will be Ms. Donahue, and your Alternate will be Mr. Carney. Next, there are Board Appointees to serve on the Public Safety Committee, which has dual purposes, the LEPC. These are two positions of the Board, according to that body's rules of procedure, so take nominations for Public Safety Committee. Two names will have to be ultimately-
I'll go ahead and nominate Ms. Donahue to the Public Safety Committee.
And I'd like to nominate Mr. Whitson if he'd like to continue doing it.
I definitely would be interested.
Are there any other nominations for Public Safety Committee? Hearing none, there are two people nominated and two positions, so you will each serve. Next is your Representative on the Fire Levy Board, which there is one based on the Charter. Accept nominations for Fire Levy Board, Board of Supervisors Representative on the Fire Levy Board.
I'd nominate Van Carney as a Fire Levy Rep if he'd be willing to continue doing it.
I will.
Thank you.
Any other nominations for Board Rep on the Fire Levy Board? Hearing none, Mr. Carney will serve. Next is a Representative to serve as the Board's Representative to the Rapid安县德文 Warren Regional Jail Authority Board. This position also suggests there being an Appointee and an Alternate. The County Administrator and the Sheriff also serve on this Board.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Whitson if he would wish to continue.
Yeah, I would. I really enjoy that work. Thank you.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Comer as an Alternate if she's willing to do it.
I am. I'd be happy to.
Any other nominations to serve on the RSWRJ Authority Board? Hearing none, one of you will be Mr. Whitson, and Ms. Comer will be the Alternate. Next is a person to serve on the Agricultural and Forested Districts Advisory Committee. Didn't look ahead, but I think there might need to be a meeting this year, if not over next year. This is for the Agricultural and Forested Districts that are renewed every 10 years, and they go through a cycle where sometimes several are due and other times none are due. So I'll accept a nomination. And it might make some sense for the Planning Commission Rep to be or not be the person, because this body typically meets just before the Planning Commission.
Except for the Planning Commission, so it just makes sense.
Okay, I didn't want to volun- volun- ask, or whatever the term is.
I didn't want to nominate myself.
Ms. Smith.
I was gonna nominate Ms. Smith.
Any other nominations for the Agricultural and Forested Districts Advisory Committee? Okay, Ms.-
Let's hope it meets next year.
That's right, Ms. Smith.
No pressure.
By acclamation. Next is Representative to serve on the Rapid安县 County Recreational Facilities Authority, and the Board has appointed an Alternate in the past as well. So accept the nominations for Appointee and Alternate.
I'd like to appoint Mr. Carney if he's willing to continue to serve. He's done a great job.
I would love to. Thank you, and I'd like to, if you can put an Alternate on there, if Ms. Comer's willing to do it, I'd love to have an Alternate.
I am.
Any other nominations for the Appointee or the Alternate for the RCRAFA? Hearing none, we'll close nominations, and Mr. Carney will be the Rep, and Ms. Comer will be the Alternate. Next we have Board Representative to the Rapid安县 County Community Policy and Management Team, CPMT. Take a nominee, nominations.
Would you just describe a little bit the scope and breadth?
CPMT meets monthly on-
We have the meeting on Tuesdays, the 3rd Tuesday, February-
Right now, the schedule is to meet the following Tuesday of every month.
Your report.
That is something that-
I can't remember who did the question.
And who was-
I was on it last year.
Okay.
I really, I have to say, I feel very strongly, having served before Ms. Donahue, that this is a very good position for us all to take a turn with, because I think you really learn a lot when you attend those meetings, and it's an opportunity to see and learn aspects about the county that you might not ordinarily hear as a supervisor.
Very good point.
So if there's, if there's somebody, I know those midday meetings can be tough, but I found it to be very enlightening, and I really encourage everyone, if you can find a way to make it fit with your schedule, to take an opportunity on that.
I would, I'd like to nominate Ms. Comer if that would be of interest to you. I think up to this point here, you have alternate positions.
Yeah. It's of great interest to me. It ties in, you know, yes, yes.
Those type of groups are always looking to have people who have children and children in the school system, and check a few boxes there. So there was Mr. Whitson nominating Ms. Comer. Any other nominations? Hearing none, Ms. Comer will be your Rep by acclamation. Next, there are two positions for the Rules Committee, and in the past, there's also been an Alternate. Don't know if the body met during 2023.
We haven't met. If something comes up, you all can just send it to me, and I'll bring you language if you don't want to make appointments. But is that the pleasure of the Board?
So the way, the way this resolution is structured, these motions or these nominations and votes are filling an ultimate, in a resolution, if the Board elects to not make appointments to this body, then it would just, that part would be left out of the resolution.
I think we delayed it last year. Still haven't-
I think you did, or maybe two years ago.
Yep.
Totally up to the Board.
Let's skip it, I'd say, for now.
Yeah, I mean, if something comes up, we can always unofficially work on it.
Next are two positions to serve as members of the Building Committee. Accept nominations for the Building Committee.
Somebody's car's going off.
Definitely not mine. I don't even think I have that technology.
Any comments on the Building Committee?
You know, sort of, I guess, I was the instigator, sort of, in October, sort of changing directions here, so I guess I could add it. I mentioned at that meeting in October that I thought it would maybe make more sense and be more efficient if we kind of, you know, just had a standing supervising monthly meeting regarding new projects, ongoing old projects, and I, and personally, I'd like to see how that sort of shakes out. So I would be fine, and would prefer to not have the Building Committee at this point.
Okay. I agree. I think we can skip over it, unless someone else.
I don't think there's any ground to be gained here today, but I would just ask my fellow Board members to think about what benefit there might be to having a Citizen Oversight Committee involved in the building projects. I know there's a lot of talk about the courthouse, but the scope that was assigned to the Building Committee when we asked for a charter included not only the courthouse, but the other, the other historic buildings on the campus, and the maintenance of the grounds as well. And so while the Board currently doesn't see the wisdom of reconvening a Building Committee, I do think there is wisdom there, and would ask you to consider that for the future.
The last paragraph of this resolution sets forth your regular meeting schedule, identifies how the body will handle situations when weather might preclude the Board from meeting, and that is vested in the power of the Chair and the Vice Chair, all true to State Code. If you'd like me to review it in any more detail, I'd be happy to. But with that, with the votes taken and the two positions skipped, this resolution would now be in a form to be moved and seconded and voted for the slate that's been adopted, which was all by acclamation.
Okay. I will put forward a motion that we adopt the resolution, electing the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors, and making various appointments that we've now gone through, and that same resolution setting the regular meeting schedule for the Board of Supervisors for calendar year 2024.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
A second, Matt, motion.
Have a motion, a second? You want a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
All right. Mr. Carney.
Aye.
Ms. Comer.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
And I also.
Thank you.
All right. Moving into adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I will put forward a motion to adopt the agenda that was released publicly in advance of our meeting, posted to Board Docs, and that we have before us today.
A motion, do I have a second?
If there's no addendum items, I'll second that motion.
There is an addendum item. I think because it's posted, that's covered by Mr. Whitson's motion, but to be clear, that item will require unanimous consent for action.
Okay. And that's the, one of the appointments?
Yes, the last appointment.
Okay.
Who's still seconding, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Going on to the Superintendent Report, Dr. Grimsley.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Welcome, Ms. Comer. Happy New Year from Panther Nation. We are back from winter break and ready for what promises to be a very eventful, productive 2024. RCPS ended 2023 very strongly, wrapping up our first semester SOLs, final projects, and exams. Some students even completed first semester certifications, including students enrolled in the Ag Academy and Health Sciences Academy, who received a plethora of career stackable credentials. RCPS was full of holiday spirit at the close of the semester. I hope you were able to attend the Holiday Extravaganza Concert that included the high school jazz and concert band, and the backed by popular demand first-ever RCHS percussion ensemble and a cappella group, or Acap Panthers. The evening was very well attended, and the students were absolutely amazing. At RCES, a very fun and festive Grinchmas event took place, a family engagement night that was focused on literacy and learning, that led students and parents through a myriad of fun games, puzzles, activities, and hands-on learning. The event also allowed parents to receive vital information about the importance of literacy and learning development, and of course, the Grinch jingled and mingled with the crowd to the students' delight. The Headwaters Foundation After School and Richmond Program ended a very successful first session with an open house, complete with student demonstrations and products. Session 2 will begin on January 16th and will run Tuesdays through Thursdays each week through May 16th. This session's offerings will include sports and nutrition, totality martial arts again, arts and crafts, dance, STEM or STEAM, whichever way you like to call it. We like STEAM. Yeah, I agree. Mr. Curry might disagree with us, but. Science and agriculture, and community workshops. If interested in the after-school program, parents should contact Lacy Jenkins at Headwaters. At next Tuesday's school board meeting, we will be kicking off our budget planning by going through the components of the governor's budget, should we ever get our Calc tool up. We've got a few days to put that together, they better hurry. But we are thankful for your continued collaboration in budget planning and advocacy efforts as we've experienced these last few years, and it is such a relief to see this work come to fruition, because in the proposed BIONE budget, it does include the removal of the supplemental basic aid cap, which means we're starting with that revenue in place that we've been working so hard to receive. So the Calc tool will show us that where it, that's in there, but the language specifically does call that out, that it can exceed that 2,007 amount. So that's fantastic. We're starting with it there, in the budget bill, anyway. So we still have some work to do to get to the General Assembly, to ensure that they permanently keep that cap removed, so we don't always have to rely on the superseding of the budget bill. But we're in a much better place to start the budget planning. So we have so many great things going on in this small and mighty school system, but we thank you for all you continue to do to support our students and staff. So thank you so much. We couldn't do it without you. Do you have any questions for me?
Always have a question.
Yay.
I had a constituent contact me probably in mid-December, so this is my first opportunity to pass this question on to you, and if you're, you're generally pretty good at responding on your feet, but if you need to come back to me later with more information, that's no problem. But I did want to just put it on the record. So constituent had heard statements or read about basically elementary school free lunches, and so as we're talking about local contribution to our school system, and then Ms. Donahue and I having attended the, I guess, late last year, September, October, the USDA grant program-related visit to the elementary school.
Yes.
My question to you is if you could, one, describe what the overall fiscal picture was and is going to be with respect to elementary school lunches, and number two, the extent to which those lunches were provided at, are provided at no cost to students, and if that is correct, then how, how that 100% subsidization of school lunches occurred?
Sure. So the elementary school is eligible for what's called the Community Eligibility Provision, CEP, program for the first time. We've wanted to get to that point, but to do that, you have to have had over 30 or 40% free reduced lunch in your school. So we hadn't hit that mark for quite some time, and that's measured April 1st, I believe, is that cutoff date. So we did a lot more outreach for free reduced lunch applications, and that number came in, and we also had to work with DSS to outreach with families for those receiving benefits. So they are eligible, free breakfast and lunch at the elementary. However, high school wasn't. They didn't meet that threshold just yet. However, the USDA did just change that law, effective in October. However, it won't come into effect until the following school year. High school will be eligible next year for free breakfast and lunch. This year, we did fill in the gap with grant funding, so our high school has actually been getting free lunch all semester, and we're getting ready to announce that that will continue based on another grant. So we're thrilled to be able to offer that. Feeding our students is so important, they can't learn if they're hungry. We're doing our best to do that. So that's why. So there's a very specific federal provision that the school has to meet to receive that subsidization.
I think what would be helpful, perhaps, this is a backup worksheet, and we can save it for the budget discussions that are to come, but some kind of backup worksheet that just shows sort of the funding of both schools, of school lunch programs, because in isolation, I recall, those are pretty significant line items in the budget. I mean, it's big money. And so it would be helpful, it would be helpful to see, just from a funding perspective, where the grant money fits in, local contribution fits in.
Sure.
And so that, so that I can, in a more educated fashion, answer questions that arise about this.
Yes. Your beneficiaries are generally not moneymakers at all.
Yeah.
We're basically usually having to start them up every year, but the subsidization does help, especially with our families, who we had seen the growth in student lunch debt just astronomically increase compared to previous years. So this was a huge relief to families.
Okay, but I mean, I also want to be clear that I, and I think I said it last time we talked in a meeting like this, that your efforts with the USDA program should not be overlooked, and quite significant and quite remarkable, and the fact that you had those representatives out here looking at what appears to be a big improvement in terms of the quality of food being provided- the quality of food being provided to elementary school students. So you're to be applauded for that. But I just would like to
Sure.
see the fiscal effect of that USDA funding, and then anything else that's flowing in.
That is excellent feedback. And as you all hear from your constituents about any points of clarification that might be needed in the school budget, we'll be developing our budget report, which is our document that we love to educate, you know, folks about the different aspects of it. So I'm always looking for that feedback on what you feel like could use some more transparency or clarity, and we can certainly put that in.
And I think my favorite topic, and just your bus fleet.
Yep.
Route numbers, capacity, capacity of vehicles, optimization
Absolutely.
of your fleet, and, and just to make sure that we're, we all understand what it costs and why.
Absolutely.
And how the, how the vehicles are being utilized.
Don't forget fuel.
Fuel, yes. That's an important one, too, that we look at. But yes, transportation's an area, and we may need some help with some advocacy efforts there. I'm waiting on one more point of clarification from DOE on how that's funded. But there was an interesting piece in the formula that we dug up in looking at through some of the transportation reports that I'm curious about how they
Okay.
use that per pupil piece on one-week look at ridership, when it's an average in one week in October, when just about half your fleet's not riding, and that's the state rep. So we may have our next, let's get supplemental basic aid through first before I bug him about that one. But
Okay.
there's another area in that CAL tool that I think we need to go after, too, because that's a great underfunding of transportation costs.
All right. Thanks so much.
Of course.
Excellent. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
All right. Company four, monthly report.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year.
Hi, Dr. Hill. So I'm going to offer, Chief Nick couldn't be here because of work responsibilities. I'm going to offer what he gave to me with very little editing, and then tag on something at the end myself. We have, the people that took the E M R course that we discussed, five of them have taken the National Registry Test and passed it, and two have yet to test. Some of those people are currently completing the ride-along program with EMS 1400, which is part of our process that we're going to go through before they're released, which is the second stage of training and qualification. So they're also reviewing radio transmission procedures and being introduced to the software on E S O, so they can complete their reports. And I'll say another word about E S O later, if you'll permit it. Darren Stevens is working on protocols with Dr. Jenks. I just got an update on that. Protocols for the E M Rs. The protocols that we have now that govern us are from, are for E M Ts, from Dr. Jenks. And then, of course, Company nine up in Chester Gap, their medical command comes out of Front Royal, not Warren. So they've got a different set. In February, we'll have the other half of the E M T course in Flint Hill at our own firehouse for those providers that completed the E M R course. This will be a shortened session, and it'll be conducted by the same instructor that taught the E M R course. And we really appreciate the county arranging for him and his team. It was a well-done course and a very good instructor. And I'm skeptically listening to him as an emergency physician. I'm quite impressed with his knowledge and skills as a paramedic. So once that course is completed, the county, I hope I'm not misquoting you, Darren, plans to offer a full-on E M T class for all other interested parties. We had a couple of people come to us and say, we couldn't do the E M R class. Can we get in on this E M T class? And it really isn't going to work, because this E M T class is the second half. The full-on E M T is about 120 hours, and we've done 60, and we'll do 60 more with that, or thereabouts. And I think some of you have heard that we had a barbecue dinner fundraising event in early December, which was, Chief Nick says successful, I would say wildly successful. We were so gratified and appreciative of the huge turnout that we had, and the expression of community support and interest. And those of us who've been working hard on this, we're really reinforced in that, and reinforced in our determination to show our diligence in providing the services to the community. And the fundraising community committee is working on other events. Now, as to my own offer, I want to say that the dispatcher, today I'm going to present to you the dispatcher's office's report on calls. They report 32 total calls with only seven responses in the month of December. And I know that's not right. It's not possible in that report to sort out the fire EMS calls, because some calls were combined. What they're doing is they're taking the dispatch records and giving us that, right? It's automated. But this is so wildly discordant with our own data that we have, when we come back from a call, we fill out a run sheet, and that's compiled. And it's just not the same numbers. And for example, when one of us goes to a scene, an EMS call in our own vehicle, or to a fire call, it doesn't get into the system. It's not documented. So yesterday, Ms. Donahue and I went on a call, and when we got back, we examined the stuff that was transmitted to us, the papers that were transmitted to us from the dispatcher's office. And it didn't show us as responding at all, even though we'd properly used the radio and reported that we were there, and it had been acknowledged. And I think that may be because we were using the utility and not the ambulance. I just don't know. But, so I want to tell you that those numbers are in question. And we had had a little bit of a hint last month that there might be some inconsistencies and inaccuracies. And we were hoping that the E S O system would fix all that. Well, some of these things are not going to be fixed by E S O. So, because specifically the responding to scene ourselves in our own vehicles. So we're looking into this and attempting to reconcile the two systems of reporting now, without waiting for E S O to fix it for us. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Your last point about dispatch data is interesting, because I know at our last Public Safety Committee meeting, Mr. Stevens in particular has been working pretty hard to fine-tune our response data, to the point that I think it's being collated or aggregated, maybe is a better word, in a fairly efficient way now. So at a minimum, I think we should take that up at our next Public Safety Committee meeting, just to make sure that something, something is not falling through the cracks, because we certainly want your data to reflect actual level of activity.
We'd like credit for the work we've been doing. And please don't take this as a complaint.
No.
It's an explanation and
That's good.
a commitment to fix it ourselves.
Yeah. But I think there's a real focus right now on trying to get our response data to be as accurate as possible, and then also to make sure that the data are being presented in such a way that it doesn't have a demoralizing effect on companies, and that however the data are presented are sending the right message, which is, many companies are getting on nearly every call, and there are always extenuating circumstances where maybe they aren't. But we want to make sure that that, too, is shown in the data. So I know Mr. Stevens, as I said, in particular, has been working really hard to get us to a point where we can get data quickly, and aggregated quickly, and organized. So thank you for raising that, and we'll make sure that if there's a problem, it's fixed.
Thank you, sir.
I would just say, I hope that those response numbers, good, bad, or indifferent, can be brought to the board level, so we can review them, because I believe it was about this time last year that I requested that we start to get emergency services response data, in terms of time, how long it took to get out, who responded, and locations, so we can more accurately make decisions involving our first responders.
I believe in the past, the association did at least a yearly report on.
So Lieutenant Jenkins and Mr. Stevens have worked together in pitching in on Excel side. And so there is a modified model that was considered by the Public Safety Committee, and there was some good constructive feedback from that. And so I just received the December data, which probably you just received, from Lieutenant Jenkins.
Yes, sir.
And when I, I'll assimilate that into the full year of data, and make sure that gets to the board.
Because I would say, you know, one of the most important things to me, while I hear what you're saying, Dr. Hill, that we got these numbers, and we don't believe them to be accurate, what would be most important to me is that all of the companies are being, their data's being kept in the same way. So that Company one doesn't have one way that they figure out their responses, and Company four doesn't figure out their responses differently, that everybody's working from the same playbook, and so we have accurate information.
I would hope that we could do that through the Chiefs Association. Is that the right place to go for that?
Well, certainly, when the Chiefs can come together on a common point, I think that's great for us to follow along. That doesn't always happen. This latest version identifies those calls that were responded to within eight minutes, which is in your agreement. And then the calls that were responded to, but not within eight minutes for various, like, five other subsets, to try to bin them into some reasonable number of, you responded, but you were in a different type of vehicle.
Right.
Or you responded, and you were more than eight minutes. And there's a few other things. And trying to just use those standardized metrics for everybody
Right.
is where we're heading.
And I know Mr. Polster had kind of been keeping points while he was employed by the county. So I think it kind of fell off the radar with his departure. But to me, that is urgently needed information for all companies.
And it's not like dispatch isn't trying to do everything they can to help. I just know the technologies aren't coming together in a way that it's easily reportable.
Right. There's certainly gaps, as far as I understood it, in the software that we have, that it doesn't collate it easily
Right.
for us to digest it, which I completely get. However, the way that you get ahead of that is that nine months ago, when we brought it up the first time, it would have been nice to have a daily update, so that we at this time had a body of information we could pull on.
I personally don't think that that's going to be burdensome, because we want to know that ourselves
Right.
about our own company.
I don't know how you do planning without those data points.
How do you manage which you can't measure?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And I think, I think what we, just to be clear, what we, what we saw the last time we met at the Public Safety Committee is, Mr. Stevens and I failed to mention, Lieutenant Jenkins have done a really great job at trying to standardize and better present the data. And I know Mr. Curry's helping from an Excel data compilation standpoint. So I do think we're out in the right direction, to your point. I think that once we have a reliable sort of template for presenting response data, obviously, one thing that we want to look at is average on-scene response time, particularly for medical calls. So I think we should have that at the board level frequently. And I think we're really headed in the right direction, working with a still somewhat imperfect system, but we're getting closer. So it's not to say what you said worries me. It's just a reminder that there might still be some additional cleanup, and we're not in the weeds on how all that data's being pulled together. But I assure you that we've got really good people who are working really hard at it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Thank you. All right. We're moving into public comment.
Madam Chair, if I, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Henry is here from R E C. If my colleagues would agree, I just had one question for him. I thought maybe as part of our presentations. It's a very simple question. Up and down Harris Hollow Road, I noticed in the last two weeks, there's a lot of, funny term, red tape, but it is, it's red R E C tape. And I did notice your tree contractor in the area. And I was just curious if you could explain to us if this is sort of a follow-up tree removal project, if it's, if it's just regular maintenance, or, because this is somewhat new for me to see these marked areas, and I'm sure it's happening in other parts of the county.
I am so sorry. I don't know specifically what they're doing there, but I can follow up with you. I mentioned to some of the guys in the office that we should take a look at the lines around town.
Wow. So you must have mobilized the troops, so to speak, because I saw a lot of, a lot of your contractor trucks out the other day. I just, I didn't, you'd done such a thorough job on, on your rights of way previously, and I just didn't know if this is a routine kind of follow-up project. Well, anyway, you can come back to us. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
They mentioned to me that they were specifically doing anything. So let me just
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. All the way, like, I saw a couple places on Harris Hollow Road, and then up around the corner, as it comes to Giv Brown Hollow, there are several areas marked. And it looks like it's tree removal, but.
One, thank you, Mr. Henry, for your help with the power outage in Sperryville on the weekend, right, like, right before Christmas. I know that was urgently needed response by a lot of people and companies in Sperryville. So much, much appreciation there for your quick response. And thank you in advance for your help with the storm coming out this weekend.
All right. Moving into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized. When you come up, give us your name and the district you're in.
Anita Ramos, Hampton District. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I do this, I've done this for a number of years since, excuse me, since my husband passed away. I want to recognize at this time, there are people in this room, there are people probably here, who have taken care of our country, people who have been in the services, worked for the federal government in some way, been contractors. If any of you have helped take care of our nation, could you please stand just for a moment? Anyone? Now, a little lighter side. The Washington Post the other day had a big article with all kinds of charts on it, and said that Americans are not reading like they used to. Well, I don't see it. I've been in two bookstores and two libraries in the last month, and they've all been crowded and busy with people. And so I just wanted to remind you all, and anybody else that might be listening, that there's plenty of things to do, and one should think about reading a book this year. Please, a book. Read for information.
I didn't say.
Read for getting away from it all. Excitement. This is a Virginia author, by the way. I know her. She's great. Read something that you can put in your back pocket or carry in your purse. Of course, it's a horse book. Another way to get away from it all. Read something that's serious fiction. Read some things that make you think. Something that can challenge you. And last of all, you can't think of anything to read. You could go to the library and ask them. Librarians are great. I spent 27 years in a library, and I've never known a librarian that didn't have favorite books. But if you can't think of anything, something like this perhaps might inspire you.
Read about.
I've only hit about 125, but I'm still working on reading more books. So please, go to your local library, go to bookstore, but read a book this year, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
I've been inspired by Sheila. I might expect a book review sometime or another from you all.
All right. Continuing on, public comment. Yes, ma'am?
This seems to be a year to have fun, which I think is really nice. Anyway, welcome, Ms. Comer.
And you are?
Oh, Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. Okay.
Thank you.
How could we forget? Right. Okay. Sorry about that. With the snowstorm coming, I started thinking about snowflakes, and how each snowflake, it's been said, is unique and individual. So I started thinking, here we are, our board, each of us, each of you have strengths So I started thinking, here we are, our board, each of us, each of you have strengths and talents, unique unto yourself. And I think that's a wonderful thing. So I thought about sparkly snowflakes, which I think are fun. Snowflakes can be very interesting because they can be gathered together to have snowball fights, or they can be all gathered together to make fun things like a snowman or a fortress, like we have our courthouse coming up. And I think the way our snowflakes can all work together is going to be a really wonderful thing this year as we look at the various projects and things that we need to be thinking about for the benefit of our community. And so I wanted to give each one of you.
I was hoping we were getting.
I like sparkly things, too.
I still love my taking nap pens are the best.
Here's another to add to the pile.
Thank you. It's lovely.
Thank you, Sheila.
We have one for a man somehow.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one. Everybody gets a sparkle. I use these on my Christmas cards this year. And when I mail my bills out, I put them on, too. Is that decent?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else public comment?
I've got a whole shoebox full of Sheila Gressinger's stuff.
It's great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gail Kirks, Partner Social Services. And I just wanted to take a moment to tell you all and tell the community at large something you guys already know, and that Rappahannock is just an incredibly generous and responsive community. And so I just wanted to sort of let everybody know that as part of the Holiday Assistance Program for our families, we had over 100, we had 131 children be signed up for the program. And every single one of them was sponsored, with the exception of one family that came in kind of the last minute. And for that, we had received donated funds, so we were able to, as an agency, do something for the family. So that was 54 different families. And one of the most remarkable things about it was that we launched the, we opened up the application period in October, October 11th. And it did a soft close on November 15th. And by that, I mean, if someone was identified after that, we certainly weren't going to turn them away. But we didn't put our trees up until November 17th. And at that time, we had 121. But by December 1st, over 100 kids had already been sponsored and picked up. So there was just such an immediate and generous response. It was really so gratifying to be a small part of that. And just some interesting things that also came out of it. It was so evenly. It was about, almost 51% boys, 29% girls. But 71 of the children were age 11 to 17, which was fairly significant because it's the older kids who generally get, you know, forgotten a lot. So happy to see them. And then another 49 or 35% of the kids were between the ages of three and 10. We also have a breakout, kind of tracked it out by ZIP code, by households. So if anyone's interested in that information, I certainly have that to share. But the other piece, that's just another tidbit about the community, that I think it's important that we realize that grandparents raising their grandchildren has been an increasing trend nationwide, within the state. And so of those 54 households that we serve, 26% of them were grandparents had households. So our grandparents, you know, are stepping up. And we just, as a community, need to be aware that that poses a different kind of parenting, because a lot happens between the time you raise your own children and then you're raising the next generation out of that. So a lot of extra supports around that. But so I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank this community for how well you responded and for just letting you know that the appreciation and just the genuine gratitude that these families expressed as they either picked up their sponsored gifts or we delivered them to the people who were having some challenges with transportation was so sincere and so authentic. And it just goes back out to the community. So I just wanted to share that with you all and let you know. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Anyone else public comment? Not seeing anyone in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak, please raise your Zoom hand and be recognized. Not seeing any hands raised on Zoom. I'll close public comment. Moving into consent agenda.
Does anyone have anything to pull out of the consent agenda? I have made a motion that we adopted as presented.
I'll second your motion to adopt the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 I would just say, if you're ever wondering what the contribution is of the Rules Committee to the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors meetings, it's the development of the consent agenda.
It was great, a great contribution.
All right.
Everyone's great.
We have a, to the Rappahannock County Broadband Authority.
Yes, this year, where the bylaws from the broadband authority identify that so a board member, and it's their term, their parallel term on the broadband authority ends. And so you have a vacancy for the term that was occupied by Mr. Frazier that ends January 23, 2025. You've received two applications that are attached and have been provided to board members. At least one applicant is here.
Yes, I happen to, it's Mr. Reinhardt. He is here. I'd also like to, before I say much of anything, I'd like to point out it's really exciting to get two applications. I know recently, we received a few applications for the Library Board, and it's just nice to see community members engage themselves. So I think both applicants, Mr. Reinhardt is, he does live in the Jackson District. I believe it was stated in the, the notice that preference would be given to someone in the Jackson District. Additionally, he has knowledge of many of our nonprofits and other organizations that are kind of the backbone of Rappahannock. He's very well versed in all things broadband, including the, the deal that we are engaged in as a community, so as a county. So I'd like to move to appoint him unless there's any further discussion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I just, I guess I wanted clarification because I think, if I'm not mistaken, you all have also been serving as our contractor for the webpage, for the broadband authority. And so I just wanted to make sure that we can appoint a contractor or a webmaster to the authority that is contracting the business with that individual. I think with the dollar amounts involved, it's not a conflict. But I just want a clarification on that point.
I, I don't think there would be any issue.
The webpage you speak of is the rapbroadband.org, which I encourage everybody to go to.
Well, it would be nice if it was updated. I think that information's a little out of date.
So this would only be one appointed position with the county. Oh, yeah?
Thank you for checking that for me, Art.
Pursuant to Article 7, Section 6, a person holding the office of treasurer, sheriff, detective, commo, or certain court commissioner, supervisor, councilman, mayor, board, chairman, or other member of the governing body of the local county shall hold more than one office at the same time. Subsection H should be construed to prohibit the commissioner of revenue of a county serving as an unofficial manager of a town located in the county. Governor of a county, commander of a party, deputy sheriff, serving as an appointed town sergeant. Person serving simultaneously as assistant attorney of the commo in the city of Winchester and Frederick County, Wayne County. Person serving simultaneously as part-time assistant attorney of the commo.
You still interested in doing that after this?
I think the dollar amount's like $5,000. And this isn't anything new. I mean, it's also, I mean, we have a school board member that, you know, has a farm and sells product to the school board. So it certainly happens. But I just, it's, I'd rather know at the beginning than find out later.
I anticipated the question, and maybe has to just resolve that, too.
Good.
So this broadband, this broadband board is what we're talking about. And I don't see a member of the regional jail or jail farm board under $35, I see. Member of the board of directors, governing board or advisory council for committee of the airport, regional industrial facility, local parks and recreation, Richmond, Indiana, and six other. I don't see that there is a prohibition under the dual office holding provisions of the code for change.
There could potentially be a conflict of interest implications should the body need to vote on something that has to do with that contract. But then, in those cases, depending on the eligibility, you have to not be involved.
Yeah, just recuse yourself would be all that I would ask for.
You're tying the contract specifically for the website?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that sounds logical that we would not have a person also voting on it.
Any other discussion?
Sure thing.
So just to be clear, this is to serve the remaining portion, which runs through January 23rd, 2025. I assume that was all part of your motion?
Yes.
Good.
All right.
It's a friendly clarification. It's reflected in the second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Martin.
Virginia Career Works Piedmont.
The next position is also owing to Mr. Frazier leaving the board. Mr. Frazier's been appointed to Virginia Career Works Piedmont, which names shifted around over the last few years. But he was appointed in October 3, 2011 by this board to serve at the pleasure of the board until that position was changed. So the board can identify another member. Ms. Comer does work with some of these same folks in her day job, so she does have familiarity with the organization.
I'll, I'll go ahead and, before a motion, appoint Ms. Comer to serve on the Virginia Career Works Piedmont C L E O Council to serve at the pleasure of the board until a change in representation is desired.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Carney?
Aye.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 I, I will say aye, but I think Mr. Frazier may have served as the vice chairman, so I just wanted to, or in the past, he may have served as the vice chair for that organization. So just, I'm not sure what the expectation will be from the representative, but I just wanted to state that. I think he's.
It's a pretty big group, but.
Yeah, I think he's been vice chair of different positions as an officer over the years.
All right, appointment to the Rappahannock County Recreational Facilities Authority.
This is really just a notice to the board. The newspaper notices will run tomorrow and next week for the vacancy for the Recreational Facilities Authority. Ms. McCool has resigned due to her obligations as a school board member. So I've included the current slate so people, so board members and public can see who other peers would be. And I've also suggested to the board that you, you might want to try to better stagger these terms when you make an appointment. These appointments are done by resolution as required by your code. Typically, they are for the remaining portion of a term. But I think a few years ago, we, the community got down to, like, no members, and then it built back, which is probably why just about every member is coming due in a two-year period. So to that extent, I think a 2027 end date might make sense. You'll have 25, 26, and then a 27. And then as other positions come vacant, either due resignation or otherwise, the board can consider trying to better stagger those terms. So the vacancy notice is attached, and it'll be in the paper.
Okay.
Okay, good.
I just wanted to say a quick word of thanks for Ms. McCool, for her many years of service on that authority. And I think I served twice, two years with her, including most recently in 2021, when there were a lot of problems through no fault of the authority members for the most part that year. And it became a lot more work than serving on the park board ever should be. And she really steered that group in the right direction, along with Robert Yow. And I'm so thankful for the service of both of them.
And it looks like, in terms of the distribution of individuals from different voting districts, that really, it could be someone from anywhere in the county. I don't, we already have two folks from Hampton on the board, one from Jackson, two from Piedmont. So one from Wakefield and one from Stonewall. So hopefully, we'll get applications from all over the place. And I think it's a pretty exciting.
It's a great authority.
Body, yeah. A lot going on. And we need a great politician to navigate pickleball controversy.
All right.
So maybe a tennis player.
The addendum item.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yes, this, this item is the one I noted, I added. I informed the board during the middle of December that Ms. Brooks submitted her resignation from Encompass Community Supports Board that was formerly the Rappahannock Broadband Community Services. She's had that effective upon her appointment of her replacement for February, generally. So I think she intends to serve through when the board makes an appointment. Mr. Case Dutil did submit an application, and you could appoint him if you waived all informalities because he's not present, couldn't be here today due to other obligations. And it hasn't been advertised, but this is not a body for which advertisement is mandated by your policy. So I think you could make an appointment today, or you could ask me to place a notice in the paper and make an appointment in February, or perhaps take some other path that I'm not thinking of.
Could you remind me what the current makeup of this organization is?
Yes. So locally, we have three representatives, Gail, Eve, and Fran Krebsler. Fran was most recently appointed. These are three members, three-year terms, and they can serve three sets of terms. Three. They can serve nine years.
Thank you, Gary. Do you all want to make this appointment today, or would you prefer to wait until February?
I think we should just do it.
With that being said, Mr. Dutil resides in the Piedmont District. So I would make a motion appointing Case Dutil to the C S B for the term. What's the expiration date on that term? The 27th, 2027?
It's December 31, 2024 for this. It's the remainder of Eve's term. And that's fixed. It has to be.
Okay.
So he'll, it'll come back up in a year.
Beginning on the, on the last day of Ms. Brooks' service.
Well, that's, I think, Miss, based on the ways she worded her resignation, it'll be effective upon your appointment.
Oh, effective immediately.
If you make an appointment, she's done.
Until December 31, 2024.
Thank you. And you're waiving all informalities.
Waiving all formalities and informalities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second, I'll second your motion to appoint Mr. Dutil.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you.
And I think Ms. Brooks had been serving as.
She was the chair.
Chair, so.
She would be coming off being chair this year, and I think she felt that she's done her good work, and now that she would, has finished her chair, she wanted to open up to somebody else to start building experience.
Many, many thanks to her for her years of work on that organization as well.
Thank you, Gail.
All right, Company Four Monthly Report.
So this is the companion item to the presentation, at which time you could take action. Staff did prepare a resolution that would extend the terms of the currently appointed members, and on this agenda item, there's also a request from the current members for their term to be extended.
And I'm sure they'd be willing to speak if anybody has any questions.
In very general terms, the body intends to go through the process to complete the process of updating their bylaws, to elect their own directors and officers, at which time this resolution essentially would say that they would not fall under the county's directives at that time, in a very paraphrased way.
Okay, I'll put forward a motion that our board adopt the provided resolution which extends the appointment term of the chief and the other officers that we previously appointed to the Flynn Hill Volunteer Fire and Company. I believe that those original appointments were in January twenty-twenty-three.
And then modified thereafter with Mr. Nick taking the place of Mr. Gerald.
Including the, the subsequent modification of the chief position.
Do I have a motion, do we have a second? I will second. Any discussion?
I think you all know that I can't support this for the same reasons I stated last year.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Roll call, please.
Roll call, sorry. Mr. Carney?
Aye.
Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you for staying.
Thank you all.
They have a meeting tonight?
We do, at seven o'clock. New commercial activity?
The only thing I'll add, the only thing I'll mention in this context is I, I believe I raised at our last meeting, Mr. Curry is going to move one of the, one of the temporary speed signs over to Warren Avenue as you enter the town of Washington. This goes back to sort of the post office discussion, people walking on the side of the road, and people rushing into town, and it's creating a pedestrian safety problem, so I think the move, the move of one of those signs there should help a lot, and then I will be working in short order with VDOT on some additional striking and pavement in the town to mark off hydrant, fire hydrant areas that are being parked in, cars are being parked in front of hydrants, and also cars are being parked in no parking spots, and as I mentioned before, it's, I mean, the in Little Washington staff and the parking situation related to that is getting to the point where it really needs to be tightened up, and, and as mentioned, Patrick O'Connell agrees, it's just, I think we need more visual reminders to enable Little Washington staff where not to park for the sake of our other citizens and for the sake of fire safety, so I'll be executing that in short order.
All right. County construction and renovation projects.
Yes, I've provided a brief update here in the packet. You have two main projects going forward, the building envelope restorations of the contract with Legacy Architecture, who's partnered with Glave and Homes, that's executed, and I have provided that as an attachment. This is the firm that came out of the RFP that was developed by the building committee. The first task order for that project has also been executed and underway. One of the first steps is a company that will come out and do detailed scans of the exterior of each of the buildings, so that, trying to get scheduled in the next week or so at Thurgoodville. The second, the courthouse building expansion, I shared with the board a draft RFP. That document is attached to, to board docs. I have received some feedback, and certainly welcome any other feedbacks of board members or anybody else has any feedback on this RFP, please let me know. I'd like to get it out as soon as possible, and I thought maybe Friday would be a good day. Now that the holidays are behind us, a lot of feedback that came from board members was, we should probably wait till after the holidays to get this out to make sure it's not buried, so welcome your feedback.
Okay.
And happy to answer any questions.
How do people get noticed, companies that would be interested in the RFP?
Several different ways, you know, one will direct mail the notice to many companies that I've come in contact with through VACO and who've expressed interest to me. Others, as soon as it hits our website, there are people out there that have just crawling looking for these things, and they'll post it on, not necessarily just the companies, but plan rooms will post it. And then lastly, I had said I'll post it to the state's database, and so we'll be swimming in documents that are responsive and not responsive, and it'll be a journey. And lastly, our press, as soon as they write a story, many of these architectural firms are combing the internet for stories about things like this, and they will, that's already happened, people have reached out to me about it.
Okay.
All right.
Any other discussion? All right, moving on to portable changeable message sign.
This is an item that came up at the last meeting, I always call them variable message boards, but apparently the official name, as I've come to learn, is a portable changeable message sign, a PCMS. These are trailer, solar-powered, trailered, trailerable signs that look something like that. There are many different versions available, different size, face, different capabilities. I note here the pricing quotes that I just received, so from the smallest face of the sign to the largest, and there's some other differences, it's fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars. And if we want to use this anywhere in the right of way, we're going to need a permit, and I have not talked to VDOT about what restrictions they might impose on us for that. If it was outside the right of way, I think we probably wouldn't need a permit, and it's our sign ordinance, and government signs are exempt.
How many instances have there been when we have asked VDOT for this sort of signage and not been able to get it?
Pretty, well, I think, I can't recall any that related to traffic issues. Sometimes there might be delays, or we've been told there's only so many to go around, but eventually they'll come around and they go up. If there were not a traffic issue, like burn ban, I don't know how they would react. You can rent these as well, I didn't get the rental price, I couldn't ask them. I personally, I'm not sure there's enough value for us to have a, a, you know, fifteen to eighteen thousand dollar piece of equipment that's going to require maintenance and depreciate as soon as we have it.
Well, and maybe if we asked the school to put it on their message board, they would put it on their message board for us.
Chief Burke at the Public Safety Committee said that, you know, they would certainly be willing to do that, and they have a vision to have a message board at their facility. Of course, Company Three has one at their facility, and I imagine those companies would participate and have a vested interest with burn bans and things like that, but.
Yeah.
If you're going to invest significant dollars, you may as well do it through a fire company.
Yeah, I think that, if I remember correctly, this came up at our Public Safety Committee meeting, because like the burn ban, the burn ban that was imposed, removed, imposed again, and then removed, a lot of people just had no idea, and there was one fire that we know about, at least, where they didn't know, and so it was in that context, and I was thinking, okay, if you had a situation like that, or we very quickly deploy a sign on two-eleven, five-twenty-two, basically you're catching everyone, it's hard to ignore. We don't have, we have a public radio station, we don't have a daily newspaper, not everyone goes on the internet to check the Rappahannock news, so it's really, I guess, just, I, I agree, like, to, to purchase an asset that's just going to depreciate, that's not used very often. I just don't know if rental, if we could have an arrangement with someone where we get one quickly and deploy it quickly, because I think in the case of a burn ban, I mean, we're making the decision sitting right here under pretty serious circumstances, and so we wouldn't want a situation, one, to your point, where we're calling VDOT and they say, oh, I don't know, maybe, and we wait days and days, or two, we don't have a clear path for renting one where we can just get it. I mean, if, if we have a rental plan, I'd be all for that.
Yeah, I think there's a rental place in Gainesville where you get just about anything.
I talked to the company in Gainesville, got these prices, and they do rent as well, and there are other rentals, and so I can gather some rental information for the board.
We also, we also have those great closed trailhead signs, probably gathering dust in county administration, too, and we could probably scrape those and reletter them and put them back out if it was, if something was really terrible going on, but I just, I mean, as, as important as it was to make people aware about the burn ban, I just, I, the other side of the coin also is that as strong a position as we take against certain kind of signage in the county, except in extreme circumstances, I, I don't, I find it hard to support a variable sign for the county itself.
Well, and my question was, after you were to make this purchase, then who owns it? Who manages it? Because it will.
Gary does.
Yeah, you're going down a rabbit hole. Now all of a sudden, everyone knows we have this sign, and, and their message is important, and so then you have to create.
A sign ordinance for a portable sign.
Then we have to create a policy, and, and I know that because the college has asked several times, we've tried to use the town of Warrenson's little blinky sign, so I know that they have to manage that, and I think.
Let's look at rentals.
Yeah, it would be nice to know how quickly you can get one.
Well, that's, I think the key point is, there will come a time when we need one, and I also don't want to be irresponsible, and I do think the burn ban is a perfect example of where we really didn't have, like, an emphatic way of communicating it.
So I think there are some options for us there, and we talked about our ordinance not really being up to snuff, and we're working on, on that, to actually have an enforceable, enforceable way to have a burn ban, and then through our mass notification process, we may have an opportunity like Bath County did, so that if you happen to wander into the wrong cell coverage area, your phone's going to.
Right, I forgot about that, yeah.
But I'll, I'll look up the rental as well.
Yeah, okay.
All right, moving into information reports and correspondence, board committee reports. First one is Recreation Facilities Authority, and I sat in for ban at the meeting. The big thing that's up is Fodderstak ten K Classic twenty-twenty-four, I believe the date is April twentieth, and I've already seen it on Facebook, they're going to do a really good job of advertising and trying to grow it even more, trying to get sponsors, so.
Is Jonathan Moore running that again this year?
Yeah, yeah. He does such a great job, and I think they're looking to find different ways for people to donate, a little late for a Christmas gift, but who knows, you could be planning for next year. Public Safety Committee, we did meet.
We met, and I think we've already talked about a number of things that came up. We're looking at sort of the newly revamped presentation of response data, and I really want to again thank Lieutenant Jenkins and Mr. Stevens for their work on that, and, and also during the Public Safety Committee meeting, I think we had a very meaningful discussion about optimization of our, our volunteer system overall, and, and kind of next steps on gaining efficiencies, economies of scale, et cetera, to improve response times throughout the county, and then our now favorite subject, the, the temporary whatever message signs, but I think it's still an important discussion, how do we get word out when something serious has happened or is happening, and I agree with Ms. Smith that we should be conservative in spending taxpayer dollars on something like that, but at least let's keep the discussion alive and come up with a good practical solution.
Thank you. Rules Committee, I assume, did not meet.
We did not meet.
Planning Commission update.
We also did not meet.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And so there is an intent for the board and Planning Commission to meet jointly during your January seventeenth regular Planning Commission meeting. The Berkeley Group does believe they will have the edits of this iterative draft complete and back, so the bodies can digest it at that time.
I hope they send it back in a timely fashion that we can read them well in advance of the meeting.
I hope so, too. I was thankful that they said, yeah, I think we can get it done.
Fire Levy Board didn't meet, I assume?
No, there's discussions right now that the Fire Levy Board, sorry, Mr. Carney, will have an organizational meeting at the end of January, I think the date is still firming up.
All right, Treasurers' Reports.
Can I answer any questions? Cash continues to be strong. I took the opportunity the other day to walk Ms. Comer through the various reports at a very high level, and I'm sure Bonnie can give her a deeper dive at some point in time if she'd like.
Could we look at the cash flow graph, please? Because I, I think it peaks at almost seventeen million now.
Yeah, sixteen-nine, and of course, the, with that number, we need to think about which dollars are reserved or restricted.
Yeah, that's exactly.
By the, the grant provider, or you've already assigned them to be used for capital.
Yeah, well, that's exactly where I was headed, and I, I thought when we, I received our reports from the auditors last month, we're heading towards some reporting that will capture all those numbers on an ongoing basis?
Well, we can, and so that, that auto report, the auto report is supposed to depict essentially the conditions on June thirtieth, which is the right side of this chart.
Right.
Generally, right, it's not an exact lineup, but the table in that auto report, I know Bonnie was adamant that it get into the report to overtly track which amounts of your fund balance are restricted or designated or the other categories, so that there's no confusion that any of the money can be used for anything, and so we can do routine reporting in that regard as well, it doesn't change very often.
I mean, I wonder what the wisdom would be of, of taking that out of these reports, because as a board member who joined when the reports are very modest, I mean, that kept us in check, because that was a better reflection of funds on hand, where this is, this is not really unfettered.
Restricted versus.
Restricted, unrestricted.
Yeah, or unfettered and unfettered funds.
There's a very close relationship between fund balance and cash, but they're not the same thing.
Right.
Not only, one of the things that, that Treasurer Nick does for the Library Board is she reports in total what their fund balance is, but then she says, these are the restrictions. So right beneath this graph on the same page, she is likely able to just report there, so you can see it all on one page, yes, here's the actual fund balance, but then here are the restrictions within that, excuse me, here's the cash balance, but here are the restrictions within that cash.
Okay.
So then if you have, which, which number doesn't change typically month to month unless you're spending down, so it might be a list of a million for this, two hundred thousand for that, and so by the time they're all sudden done, maybe there's two million dollars of various sub items that are restricted, and you can look at that number and then see the graph and say, okay.
I guess from my perspective as a board member, I look at this, and, and I know it is a good thing, however, I, I think it requires context in that there, you do, you do need to know that this does not mean we keep collecting more and more and more money, that this is, we're trying to be responsible with people's money and have things set aside, and we understand that those things will happen with that money.
Yes.
And that is not money.
Correct, and the other part of that, and I think the county administrators mentioned multiple times, on my plate is to, to draft and to present to the board for consideration a fund balance policy, a debt policy, and those things need to come, come forth soon, and the source of that will be use of this cash balance or set aside of this cash balance.
I think that's great, and, you know, we, we talked about that for years. I think that's great and, you know, we talked about that for years, is wanting a finance committee to do exactly those sorts of things. So if you're working on those, if there's anything I can help you with, I think those are things that we can't get done quickly enough.
Thank you.
And one thing I'll add, I guess, is a corollary to that is a conversation I had with Treasurer Nick, I guess, two years ago. It was a really important discussion and it came down to the question of how do you strike a balance between having cash on hand and not overtaxing citizens? And that drove a decision by our board at that time, even going below the, it was at the time of reassessments and I believe we ended up reducing the tax rate even if I've not mistaken, a penny below what the equalized rate would have been with an eye toward not padding our cash balance to such an extent that it was having the effect of overtaxing people. So obviously we want to be in fiscally good shape and yeah, this is all good news. I appreciate Ms. Smith's point about identifying restricted funds within this because I agree that this looks very good and I think even broken out into two categories, it'll still look very healthy. And I think we all, as we're entering budget season, need to think hard about whether we're continuing to strike a balance in terms of taxation and tax rates thereof. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Any other reports you'd like to look at?
Did want to just highlight real quickly your refuse sticker program. It is January, the published date for when the new restrictions would go into place is January 1st. Culpeper is doing their best to roll things out and sell stickers. As of earlier today, they'd sold eighty-eight stickers.
Okay.
Which is not an insignificant number when you think about the value assigned to each of them. Your team at the centers at Flatwood has issued twenty-four hundred stickers. Amesville has issued eleven hundred sixty-seven stickers and our office fourteen, so three thousand five hundred eighty-one stickers that we issued. In some communication with Culpeper this morning, I told them that the mass of waste that we get at each center is about the same and for us to issue about half the number of stickers in Amesville than Flatwood, they may get a lot of requests for stickers in Culpeper, which we've suggested all along, but they didn't, they don't believe necessarily will happen, so we'll see. But we're at eighty-eight right now. I did tell them that in my, in our staff, that we're kind of in a soft rollout of the restriction right now and that as people come to the centers, if they don't have a sticker, then they're going to leave with a sticker from us. They're going to leave with an application for Culpeper or if they're not from Culpeper or they're not from us, they're going to be told they can't dispose there. But they will be allowed to dump on that visit. So we'll try to amp things up just a little bit to keep the pressure on so that this happens and then it'll be very interesting to see our waste counts as we go forward.
I haven't heard from people much one way or the other. Have you all heard much about it from folks?
We've interestingly heard from somebody from Madison, wanted to know. And there's really no avenue for that person to use our facilities anymore. I don't know why that works for their daily travel, but it does. And we heard from a lot of people from Culpeper before, but not since they've started doing their thing. And they were going to put a banner up at Amesville and I quite frankly don't know if it's there or not.
Mr. Curry, would you, do you have a total? It sounds like about, I don't know, thirty-three, thirty-four hundred stickers are going to be out, is that right?
Three, five, eight, one.
Three, five, eight, one. We've got about thirty-eight hundred housing units in Rappahannock.
Yeah.
Is, and I may have sort of been, you may have given us this information before, but is the only on the stickers, one per household or how?
It's one per, one per vehicle. I did check with Ms. Graham and there were seven thousand plus vehicles. I'm sure not every vehicle people want to put trash in, but many families use more than one vehicle to go with. So the only real requirement is that you show up at a center with your vehicle and your proper identification and they'll get a sticker on that vehicle. We don't let you leave with a couple of stickers to place on your vehicle at home.
Right. Thank you.
Yep. And I imagine if you're a very well-known person, they might not pester you for your ID.
All right, you want to go over the review of legal matters?
I can't. There are no changes for the Capielli appeal, which has not been taken up yet by the Supreme Court. Nothing from the Court of Appeals on the Flint Hill Williams case. The Caparuso case, it was the erosion sediment control case, very interesting. There was a parallel case with the brother and sister who owned the property in common and so there's a partition case and so the sister won that and has full control over the property. However, Mr. Dimitri, who's caused all the disturbance, has filed some sort of document in the court pro se and we're not really sure what that means or where it'll go. But there is a, another scheduled hearing on January 8th and so we'll see what our, what the court does.
I saw on the news last night that there's a person, I believe in Loudoun, digging a tunnel under their house and it's gotten like seven million hits on social media and trying to figure out what kind of zoning laws that may be enforced or to enforce or not. It's just, you know, the neighbors are really concerned about a tunnel.
Yeah, I would be, this gentleman has dug a pretty deep hole right next to his porch and so could have compromised his foundation, but that's not the concern of this, that's the fact he denuded about five acres at the same time.
I think that's it in that section. Everybody agrees, moving on to matters presented by the board. I'll let Donna go last since she's new to the board. Mr. Whitson?
I really don't have anything. Welcome, Ms. Comer, to the board supervisor.
Ms. Smith?
I don't, I don't think I have anything offhand.
Mr. Carney?
Yes, I just want a quick question. There may have been an update recently about the speed signs, about the permanent ones. I've got nothing but really good feedback from multiple community members on, you know, it's anecdotal, but they just feel like it's making a difference and, you know, I've got support here and blew it over two of whom I know, we got one.
Yeah.
But I just wondered now if you had any updates on that.
Sure. So all of our staff are back in the country and had multiple people out and people covering for people, everybody's back. And so had a conversation with Mr. Jenkins this morning saying, this week we'll devise a plan for getting those started next week.
Fantastic, thank you.
Ms. Comer?
I have nothing at this moment.
Thank you. The only thing I have is, and Gary helped me with this, the contract that we have with UVA to have an offsite on February 10th. There will be some advanced questions.
So you're kind of facilitated board retreat, looking at your mission, vision, what you want to do in the future, sort of thing?
Yep.
What are the, what are the hours expected for that?
I don't think we have decided on that. We know lunch is going to be involved.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Saturday. Mr. Curry is working with the base to see if we can hold the meeting there. That way we don't have to bring food in, it's already there.
February 10th?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's the UVA Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service.
Virginia Institute of Government.
And the woman that's going to lead it is Jane Ditmar, who I happened to meet last November at a VACO conference and it's just taken this long to try to find out a time and good period of time to make this happen.
I just, I wonder about our February meeting of the board, that evening, we shouldn't have much of an agenda that evening. Is there a reason we couldn't do it that evening in February?
I think there is a thought that it would be multiple hours and seven plus four hours doesn't end up being very effective.
I just, I mean, we could convene at six and be done at 10. I would just, I just want to say that certainly if this meeting is called, I will attend because I think it's our responsibility to attend, but it would be my preference to do important county business during regularly scheduled board hours at regularly scheduled board places. And that's, that's my feeling if others feel differently. So be it.
All right, that's the only.
Will it be open to the public?
Absolutely, has to be.
And I'm sure, I don't know if you've talked to Jane about when she's going to reach out to the board.
I have not, but I'll make sure.
Is it, is it fully ADA compliant there at the base?
I believe so.
Definite possibility.
I know they've got a ramp, I don't know about any other of the.
That, I don't even know that they're available, so.
Yep. We just need a place that's convenient and.
I think the hope is that it's more of a roundtable discussion and not a, you know, look across long table sort of thing. I don't need to be in the middle of it.
That's where we were going to put you, Gary.
Yeah. Well, if it's a roundtable, it could be a ring of swords, cage match, maybe.
All right.
So we'll, we'll check on the venue, is duration, all that stuff.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we adjourn our January meeting.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Just to be clear for anybody in the audience, there is no meeting tonight. It was just adjourned. Go to the basketball game.
Yay.